Meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education for November 14th, 2016, at Netherwood Up Noel Elementary Cafeteria is called to order at 6:33 PM. Ms. Wick, would you call the roll?
Ms. Feeny?
Present.
Mr. Upchuck?
Present.
Ms. Flanagan?
Present.
Mr. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Kraus? Ms. Maitzen? Mr. Zack?
Present. I had received advance notice that Mr. Kraus had an engagement out of the state and would not be here this evening. The board has a quorum. I have proved that this meeting has been properly noticed under Wisconsin's open meetings law. The proof will be with Ms. Wick if anyone wants to examine that, and I would need approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, all favor of approving the agenda as posted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries by unanimous voice vote. First up on our agenda this evening is Section A under the consent calendar. Is there any item that any board member wants removed from the consent calendar this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. So, I need to abstain from the management of the previous. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, all in favor, Gina, I don't think there's any contracts on here, so I think we're going to do this by voice. All in favor signify by saying aye, noting that Mr. Raymond abstains with respect to the meetings of minutes of the last meeting. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries and the items on the consent agenda are approved by unanimous voice vote. Section B, Board Policy 180.04 establishes the opportunity for the public to address the board. Ms. Wick, has anybody who's signified or contacted you about speaking?
Yes, Mr. Lebrun?
Anybody else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Lebrun, would you come on up over here to address the board?
Oh, that's all right. First of all, I'd really like to commend this board. I'd love to commend this board for the success in the referendum last week. I know it was extraordinarily tempting to run this through years ago, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate you taking the extra time to really put together a plan that makes sense. It wasn't a knee-jerk reaction. It made sense, and it clearly made sense to the voters in this community, and I really do appreciate that. I also appreciate the opportunity to have worked on the last three referenda, the first one that didn't pass and the last two that passed. I appreciate the chance to learn more about the school, excuse me, the school district, to learn more about the people who work here, to learn more about the kids and the fact that their voices are super important to what we do in this community, as they always have been, but sometimes they're hard to hear. So I appreciate the time that you took to hear everybody this time, and clearly the number of people who came up to vote had an opinion, and I appreciate that. We have exceptional kids in this community, and we have an exceptional school board in this community, exceptional facilities, and without question, exceptional educators in this community. And I know that this referendum was about making sure that we held on to those teachers, those educators, who are super important. In the world of business, we are seeing every day how that's changing. We are seeing, we hired 15 people who do what I do in the last three months, and every one of those applicants has had three or four jobs in the last four or five years. And I know how difficult it is to keep people engaged and interested, and I know that this will go a long way to doing that. So again, thank you. I really do appreciate it. It's interesting, before I decided to come and speak tonight, our daughter Nina was home this weekend, and she had the pleasure of serving on this board as a student liaison. And interestingly enough, I was talking to my wife tonight, and she said, "Make sure you tell them that you want to follow in your daughter's..." And so that is exactly what I intend to do. I intend to run for the school board in the spring before I get too distant from what I know about the district, thanking this board for allowing me to work on the referendum in the last three or four years. And so before I forget what I've learned, I want to offer my services, my experience on this board. And so that's all I came to say. So thank you. You'll see more of me, I assure you, and again, thank you for all that you've done to put this together.
Thank you, too. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the board? Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board? Okay. We'll move on to Item C, information items. Anyone from the OEA here to speak on the OEA report? Don't see anyone. So we'll move on to our student report, and Tessa, that is you.
All right. So this morning, I actually met with Mr. Zack, and we discussed what my role is going to look like for this year. So basically, we looked into like three major things, and the first was that we would like to focus on like my potential involvement regarding the topic of equity. Another would be the personalized learning committee, and so I would actually really love to weigh in on this because personalized learning is like the way that I best learn. And I also would love to provide feedback regarding what the layout of the school year might look like in the future, and state my ideas of possible schedule changes in a regular day at high school. So that's kind of like what we have planned for this year.
Great. Yeah, we had a delightful coffee this morning and wanted to explore ways in which we could utilize Tessa as a liaison with the high school to talk about topics that are going to be before us. And you expressed a lot of interest in the school day issue and the equity issue, and so we're going to look for ways to get your voice and the students' voice into those topics. And so Jeff, you will talk about that too as the head of the vision, so we look forward to that, Tessa. Thanks much. All right. Under action items, Item D is consideration of canceling the December 26, 2016 meeting. The board has typically not met the second meeting in December because of its proximity to the holiday, and so the request from the administration and through me is to cancel the December 26 meeting. Anything else to add on that, Brian? Pretty straightforward.
Let's keep our streak intact, please. It's best for everyone.
So I'll need a motion to the effect of canceling the December 26, 2016.
I disagree. I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
No.
Okay, so I'm still looking for a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, sure.
Barb, Jeff with the first, Barb with the second to cancel December 26 meeting. Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we will not be meeting.
It's boxing day.
Yeah. St. Stephen's Day as well. Number two is co-curricular task force recommendations, and that would be Gina, I believe, right? And Mr. Carr?
Okay. So I'll get us started. Mike and I had the opportunity to co-chair the co-curricular task force, and this came out, topic came out of a meet and confer discussion with the OEA. The board asked us to look at the current co-curricular activity schedule, which you have as Appendix B to the purple. And just to give you a little background on where we were with the co-curricular schedule, and I'll have Mike jump in for anything that I missed or to correct me, is that when we would collectively bargain, the co-curricular schedule was linked to the bachelor's base amount, and at that time, it was $33,700, and that was in 2010-11. So that was our starting teacher salary in 2010, was $33,700. When, after Act 10, it became illegal for us to bargain the co-curricular schedule, and due to budget funds, it hasn't been increased since that time, and so we've had on our radar to look at this. But also, since 2010-11, wherever people were placed in the schedule, they were frozen at that place. So you may, so how it worked is if you had zero or one years of experience, you were in the first band; up to six-plus years of experience, you were in the top band. So we have coaches and activity advisors that maybe have done their advising or coaching for six years, but they are still maybe at zero, one, or the two, three step level. We also decided not to increase the schedule as the bachelor's base changed, because as you know, we've made tremendous strides with our starting salary the last few years, and we didn't have the budget funds available to keep increasing that index. So really, in 2011-12, before I was here, the decision was made to separate the schedule from the bachelor's base, which I believe was a good decision, because now our starting base will be, you know, it's been $40,000, it'll go up to $44,000 in three years with the starting salary, and we just don't have the comparable budget funds to increase the schedule with the base. So that's a lot of background, but it's just something that we've been grappling with as we hear from our coaches and advisors that they need us to take a look at the schedule. So as part of the committee, we looked at the board's values of the whole town emphasis, and we really felt that especially after hearing the students' voice at the Vision Conference, that our co-curricular offerings is really one of the things that make us unique as a district. We have over 100 offerings that we give to students, and about 52% of our students participate in athletics, and 85% of our students do at least one activity that they report to us. So that's pretty exciting. We also know that we can never really compensate our coaches and our advisors for all the time that they put into the activities. The stipend, you look at the amounts, can never really compare to the amount of time that is spent on the activities, and we know that they're meaningful to kids. So what we wanted to do as a committee was to look at what can we do within the budget realities that we have. And we looked at, we compared ourselves to other Badger Conference schools, predicted the schools that are in Dane County to see where we were from a market standpoint, and we found that on the six-plus or our top lane, we were very competitive, but not so much at the starting. And so we talked a lot and did a lot of studying and analyzing, and we really came back to the same principles that drove our educator compensation system, and that is, let's go down to one lane, so we're not paying those step costs, we'll move everybody to that lane, and that's about 70% of the folks on the schedule, and we're hoping that over time, with not having to pay the transition cost, that we'll be able to increase that amount. Right? So it's the same principle as educator compensation model. We're compressing, but we're going to the top lane because we felt that's where we are competitive. What would you like to add to that, Mike?
That's it.
Background.
Yeah, that's good for background.
Okay. So in terms of what our recommendation is as a committee, is you'll look at B, Appendix B is a new co-curricular payment schedule. We keep the same index, but we move everybody to the top and cut off those lower steps or lanes, however you want to look at it. That when we did the costing, it's about a $50,000 impact, but we were able to reallocate money in the budget in order to pay for that. So it's already in the budget that the board has approved. There's no additional budget impact.
So you would be looking at board's motion to approve the co-curricular payment schedule that's denoted by Appendix B?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. First, before we get to that, let's ask if there are any questions or clarifications of that recommendation, and I'll go around this way. Charlie or Barb first, anything you have? Charlie?
I noticed on page, wait, it's page 50, first page in the schedule, that there's some allocation for musical director. I know in the past, there also was provision for spring play director, and I'm assuming that's not reflected here, and I'm wondering if that reflects a change in that there will not be spring play anymore, or is that...
We have not taken that out of the schedule?
Right. There was no intent, Charles, to change that. The stipend may be called something else, but I know we do offer a stipend for the play. Okay.
Oh, is that, okay.
I'm sure that must be the reference, because we have spring play, school play, or it seems like there are.
Yeah.
So we have no intent of not having.
So Band Four has the musical director, and Five has the school play and associate music.
So that's...
Any other questions, Charlie?
No.
Chris, does it...
No, I just, I'm really pleased that this is now marrying the teacher or the educator compensation plan that was approved in the referendum. I think it's really important that those two are in line.
Jeff, any questions or clarifications? Gwen, you had one.
I have a question about evaluations. It's based on athletic director, I believe that is on page two of the purple sheet. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting is that you would be talking to parents, but in, something that I've learned from Charles is that would there be availability for students to rate their coach and/or advisor?
Sure. I was actually at a conference this afternoon where I sat in on a session about surveys and evaluation. We would ask for opinions and ask about students' experiences, and we'd answer that.
And would there be any recourse for a coach or activity leader to have, to question an evaluation? If it was negative or something?
Sure. I think what we've done in the past with coaches is we have looked for feedback, we have looked for an evaluation.
Okay.
And then that factors into my evaluation of the coach overall.
Okay. So there is discussion and communication between the coach and yourself, and, you know, and...
Absolutely.
And room for improvement in saving that person's job as a coach or something?
Yeah. It's no different than the climate survey we use for the high school and teachers. So there is feedback, and that feedback is sure.
Thank you.
By the principle of...
Actually, I have a couple, two more questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And forgive me if I haven't been in the high school. It seems like sometimes like there are curriculars, co-curriculars that are embedded into the curriculum, and I'm wondering if that is a problem with paying them extra. I know that it goes beyond the classroom, but it also is in the classroom, and is that just part of the history and that's an acceptable thing?
Can you give me an example?
Like that, or something like that. You know, there's a lot of classroom work involved with FFA and FLDA and stuff like that. It's not always after school.
Well, in order to be on the schedule, it means that the activity would require non-contract time.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Well, that clarifies everything.
And that's how the bands are determined, to look at how much non-contract time is required.
Perfect. Now I get it. And then my final question is, I did art club for eight or nine years, and it's not on there, and I know that it's been revived, and, because I've been invited to speak, so that might just be an oversaying. Or you might want to check with the art teachers at the high school. I don't want to speak for them, but I was concerned after reading this over.
Thank you. I was not aware of that.
I mean, and they're, well, so thank you, yes, and I'm very pleased that this has, that we're getting all of our ducks in a row. That makes it easier in the long run for directors and administration to make sure that everything is black and white. So thank you.
I don't have any questions. So the recommendation from Gina and Mike and their task force is to adopt the co-curricular payment schedule as opposed to Appendix B, and I entertain a motion to add it. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion regarding that? Okay. Thank you, Gina and Mike, for doing this. It's been kind of on the table for a couple of years, and it just is moving forward at the right time and the right format to coincide with the new educator compensation plan. So thank you for your efforts, and if you would thank the members of the committee on behalf of the board who've spent their time doing that, we'd appreciate it if you could give us that information. Okay? Ms. Wick, would you call the roll?
Ms. Maitzen?
Yes.
Mr. Upchuck?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Zack?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a reminder, in case you have questions, we are normally scheduled to pay out the fall stipends in November, actually on Wednesday, but with this, with your approval, what we would like to do is we'll take a few extra days to pay that payroll so that we can implement the new schedule. And so I will email the advisors and coaches out today, and I don't think I'll get any complaints given on your revised schedule, so thank you.
I think that's operational anyway, but if it gets a lot of smiles, that would be good.
In case you get calls from coaches, where's my check? It's coming. It's in the mail.
All right. Item D three is 2017-2018 school calendar, and Gina, that is you. And folks should have gotten information today regarding that, some updated information regarding the survey, which is something that we have done the last several years, is reached out to the community once we have draft plans in place to get some feedback, and Gina's got that. So Gina, why don't you proceed?
Thank you. And I know, I will acknowledge ahead of time, that I gave you a lot of information this morning, and I apologize for the timing of that, but we were not able to, we did not send the survey out until Wednesday because of all of the referendum work that we had going on, and so I wanted to give our staff and parents as much time as possible to respond to the survey. So their survey responses were due Sunday, so I sent it to you as soon as I could analyze and compile everything. So I know I put a lot of information out there, so please ask questions if you have them.
And just to be fair, that you conferred with Brian and I about the timing of the survey, and it was our thought not to send it out prior to the referendum, and so that's why you've got it. That's not a Gina thing, that's on Brian and me in terms of what we want to have people focus on.
So we certainly understand that people need more time to look at the information. In terms of, just to let you know about the process, in the purple, I say that we have a calendar committee, but that wasn't an artful use of terms. Tracy Leiter, as OEA president, had asked me early on this year if she could have a group of staff come together and talk to me as we were putting the calendar together. So it wasn't an official calendar committee, but it was at the OEA's request to have some input into the calendar, and so I greatly appreciated having that input. What we did is we talked about different scenarios for calendars, and then we conferred as an administrative team to put together really three draft calendars based on previous surveys that we received from parents as well as staff feedback. So we put together three calendars, Calendar A, Calendar B, and Calendar C. And the main difference with those calendars is in the 17-18 school year, as you'll see, September 1st, which is the Friday before Labor Day, which is a Friday, I should say, before Labor Day. So one of the questions that we struggled with is do we start school on a Friday, the Friday before Labor Day, and wanted some feedback from our parents and our staff about that start date. So that was a key difference. We also talked about the principles that we use to put together the calendar, and as you know, state law requires that we start September 1st or later. And so when we look at having graduation the second Sunday in June, that can be a really compressed timeframe to try to get in all of our instructional minute requirements, as well as meet our teacher contract requirements, our holiday requirements, and then to try to balance the semesters, because we have semester courses at the high school. So the high school staff always ask us, can you try to give us as equal as possible days in the semester? Additionally, for 17-18, we received, it wasn't the majority of feedback, but significant parent feedback that Martin Luther King should not be a school day, that holiday. So that's something new that is in the 17-18 calendar. So looking at the survey to see when would people like to start, and some other questions we asked, this is the fifth calendar survey that I've done, and it's the first time that the staff and the parents have had different preferences on the calendar. So as you'll see in the purple, when we asked about the start date, when I separated out parents who do not work for us, because we have, you know, a significant part of staff who have children in the district, but if I look at parents who do not work here, 63% of those parents preferred Calendar B, and that was a start date of September 5th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. When I looked at staff, it was 51% preferred Calendar A, which was actually the Friday start date. And then if you look at, the last question was asking people to rank their calendars in order of preference. If I looked at that, 61% of parents ranked Calendar B as their first choice, and 46% of staff ranked Calendar A as their first choice. So in struggling what to recommend to you, in talking with Dr. Bustler, we felt that since it was 60% plus of our parents that preferred September 5th, and really the staff being split 50-50 on September 1st, that we recommended a September 5th start date. And that would be starting the Tuesday after Labor Day. After that, staff and parents are aligned, that 73% prefer the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a non-school day. We also asked about spring break. We traditionally have tied spring break to the Good Friday holiday, unless it's in, you know, if it's in mid-April, that's really too late for us to have spring break. So we were asking, we've received some feedback in the past saying, please just have spring break the same week every year so that we can plan and schedule. So we asked, we gave survey respondents three options. One is, would you like the spring break to be the fourth week in March? Would you like it to be the third week in March? Or would you like us to align to the UW, Edgewood, and Madison calendar? And 49% said they preferred the fourth full week in March. So you'll see that on the Calendar B recommendation. 29% felt it was very important to have Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a non-school day. So that is not a majority, but you will see that on our recommended calendar, because we felt with the board value of equity and the feedback we have received in the past, that we should recommend that to you as a non-school day. But I did want to point out in the survey, that did not get a majority response. Additionally, one thing we tried last year is we built in three inclement weather days, and then we have school end earlier, if we didn't use them all, and 84% of our respondents said they preferred that method. So that tells us that is working for us with the calendar. And then after that, we, you know, always get the handful of questions about the teacher professional development days, as to why are they within the school year? Why don't you just do them on summer? And what I would like to explain to our parents and staff, and we've done this in the past, is that really with adult learning, that it's really best practice for us to have them be periodically throughout the school year. Additionally, that gives us time to implement new learning strategies and analyze and reflect on them, as well as to analyze our learner data during the school year. So we feel it's really important for us to have those professional development days spread throughout the year. Now, we realize that can be difficult for some of our working families, so I want the board to know that our community education department does have activities for children on those days. So for our parents that need or want their kids to be engaging in activities, we do offer that at a very, very reasonable cost. I think that's all I wanted to cover. So, oh, so you'll see what we recommend, and I have Calendar B too because there's a slight modification. I met with the OEA on Thursday to talk through the initial results of the survey, and we talked about how it was trending. And the one request they had was that if schools started on September 5th, they asked that the professional development days in August be Wednesday and Thursday instead of Tuesday and Wednesday. So that's the one modification to Calendar B, which is why you'll see B2 in the corner.
So your recommendation to the board would be to approve of B2?
Correct.
Okay. And I'd like to add that Gina and I did meet with Tracy Leiter today at lunchtime, and we reviewed the options in the calendar and the surveys, and Tracy was comfortable with us proceeding with B2, recognizing the majority of the parents preferred B2, and the teachers were essentially split on that with a slight majority for A, but a significant other component of the teachers liking B2 as well, so...
Right. I will say, I mean, we'd like to start with the 18-19 calendar as soon as possible, because, I mean, you know, while the OEA, while Tracy was comfortable with it, I know it's not their preferred calendar.
And we did talk about doing 18-19 earlier, and I think that's something we'll talk about in conjunction with the provisioning committee and looking at calendar, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, okay? So that we get started a little earlier, and then start looking at school year issues and the timing of that. So, okay. Gina, anything more else? I'm going to go see if anybody has any questions or clarifications before we walk through whether we approve the recommendation. Any questions, Gina? Just clarifying or asking questions about that? or asking questions about that? Gwen, I'm gonna start with you.
No questions? I think it looks good. I know it's not an easy job. Thank you.
Jeff, Raymond?
Just a couple. So the only significant difference really between A and B two is starting on September fifth instead of the first, and PD day at the end of November goes away very.
Right, because if we start on September first, we gain that instructional day, which gives us another professional development flexibility.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Krista?
No, I just think it's really helpful for the wise, and Gina and I talked today, and, and maybe looking at when she does email out the calendar to all the district parents, that someone's wise, fill out a cover letter, because I think a lot of people, and me included today, learned a lot of information about what is the framework with which we have to work. So that's good information.
Charles?
Is global warming likely effectively exploding?
Well, as we know, global warming doesn't mean there's necessarily less snow. So I'm not sure how to answer that, Charles, but let's just not have more than three.
Art? I don't have any questions. Um, um, board, thank you for your patience. I know we usually try to get information to you in advance, just because of the referendum and what we wanted to do with the survey. We got caught up with this, so. Anyway, I didn't maintain a motion then, if there are no further questions, to approve the recommendation for the seventeen eighteen calendar, which is B two for us. Is there that motion?
Second.
Charles moves approval?
Second.
Gwen's got the second. Charles and Gwen, any discussion? My one comment was, um, I've worked on the calendar for eighteen years here, and no one's ever happy with it. And Gina takes the brunt of it the last five years, because you ask somebody opinion about calendar and what they want to align with, and you get a myriad different responses to that. So it's, uh, you're, you're not gonna please everyone. Just thanks for, we're getting input. We'd heard six or seven years ago need to get input, and the fact that we're surveying folks is much appreciated, even though we get a diversity of opinions, which reflects how hard this actually is. So with that, Janie, would you call the board to approve the calendar?
Mr. Upchuck?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Feeny?
Yes.
Ms. Funnigan?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Zahn?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Gina, thank you very much.
Six zero.
Six zero, sorry. All right, that takes us to discussion items. Committee reports policy, and you guys are set for...
We are meeting on Tuesday, December sixth, at five o'clock.
Great. And Vision Steering Committee, we are meeting Wednesday morning, this Wednesday, at seven thirty, to discuss equity issues and, uh, school day. Very good. Uh, item E two, student's achievement reports. This is always a great session for us, and we've got something new, I think. And Leslie, are you gonna kick us off?
I am not. I believe Brian is. I'm just gonna get it all set up on this screen.
Okay, Dr. Bustler, the floor is yours in terms of presenting to the board, uh, student achievement reports. The kind of the agenda will be, we're gonna spend forty-five some minutes walking through this, and then the board will have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions. This is going to come back on a board agenda for, after we've had a chance to review this in detail, for the board to follow up with the A team on the student's achievement reports. Janie?
Do you want to bring the extra tables that you requested, or do you want to...
Brian, would you want to bring folks into the...
Yeah, we're going to expand the circle a little bit, so if we could have the wild camera maybe move back a little to the left, we'll do a slide up these tables.
Yep. And everybody should have at your table this document, which is, I think, the focus of the report. A team members that are presenting, want to grab a C at one of the tables, and Gina. Board members, I just asked some really quick questions out in the comments. You can notice there's a bit of a difference in terms of our student achievement reports. And historically, you saw the student achievement reports in three-ring binder, and we had conversations with the board and everybody here. How do we, how do we make sure that community members really access the information? We've always placed it on the website. And this year, at Administrative Workshop, we talked about designing a new format. So if we are all in some respects testing out this new format, we welcome your feedback. I, I just want to highlight four pieces of information for you. Whether it's the new format or the old format with a three-ring binder, and perhaps four, five inches of information, we want you to know we still have that saved student information. So if you wanna do a deep dive on a particular question, the principal will be able to provide that. I'm not sure we're going to provide that level of detail tonight, because we all have huddled up and decided that we are not going to take anyone's time. So I'm watching the clock on my time. I only get five minutes, and we're all going to be real particular with our five minutes. One of the main points, again, whether it's this format or the old one, it's all focused on continuous improvement, which is reviewing student achievement data to understand our strengths and our areas to improve. Even though this is very user-friendly, there's still some areas for us to improve, and we highlighted them in the report. But the second, uh, point that I want to make is, this document also contains our implementation plans for the board paper. We have undergone a bit of a policy shift. The board has set the overarching framework on the path forward board paper, and asks school sites, school leadership teams, shall we say, to prepare the implementation plans. The implementation plans are contained in this document. Please be gentle with us, this is our first try at this, and we've had lots of revisions to it. So I would be a little surprised if we got it perfectly right. I think we're close, but I'm not sure that we're perfect yet. Uh, third, uh, third main point, we had all, we had a long nagging concern about community engagement on the student achievement report. We knew the board reviewed it, had great detail. We knew the administrative team did. Some of our leadership teams reviewed it in great detail, but we were concerned that we were leaving out our parents. And this new report format is targeted to our stakeholders. That's a really important shift that we've made. Uh, we hope that this type of format will motivate our parents to review it, and we're talking about, how could we, clearly we're going to put this on the website, but how can we also break this down even perhaps a little further, and from, with information to... And then last, uh, we intend on utilizing this new reporting approach on student achievement to better engage students, our staff, our parents in the community in Oregon School District. So that's our overarching four main points. We're going to walk through the K four reports, or the four K four reports, sorry, Mary. I was looking to my right, and I didn't see you. Uh, and then we'll jump to RCI, IMS in the high school. We should land about, about ten minutes to eight, and we're, we're good with taking a few questions, but what I would encourage you to do is jot down, grab a scratch note, everybody, and jot down your question, and we will get back. Also, Steve and I had a conversation that between now and December first, if you could email either Steve or me, or both of us with any questions you have, I can turn it around with the A team, and then we can provide you with better feedback on December fourteenth. So with that, we're gonna start the first twenty minutes, and Mary is going to go first.
Excellent. All right, welcome to the world of four K here. Um, we're in kindergarten right now, in our sixth year, and proud to report that by the end of last year, we had ninety-eight percent of our students that performed within what we call the developmentally appropriate band in both literacy and math. And to kind of explain that, our assessment has been through teaching strategy gold, and they have bands of development, and that's what we shoot for. So the band that would be for four, five-year-olds is where ninety-eight percent of our students fell within. We are looking forward, always looking to have our competency be at the very top, and so we have developed PLCs. We have a wonderful opportunity in that because of our structure, our students attend school Monday through Thursday and one Friday a month. So on the other Friday, or one of those Fridays, extra Fridays, I have the ability to have the staff together for three hours consecutively. So they are able to have those PLCs and meet once a month, and because they're all out in the community, they don't have the opportunity to collaborate, so that three-hour block of time is wonderful and rich conversations for competency. We also have worked this summer on a new reporting system, uh, feedback from families. Our, the report card that came with that teaching strategy gold was not as parent-friendly as we would like it to be. So we spent quite a bit of time this summer and developed a new report card. It is in a similar format to kindergarten. So we're excited to have our families be able to get used to that recording system in four K, and then it's going to fall right into looking familiar when they go to kindergarten. In the areas of character and culture, social emotional growth is always where we, you know, have our cornerstone. That's what is most important to us. We strive to always encourage kindness. We work on resiliency, both physical and emotional growth, and then we've done quite a bit with wellness lately, both in teaching mindfulness and with some nutrition and wellness goals, but I'll also talk about adventure. Um, our curriculum is definitely play-based, and we have really taken a step toward more curiosity, more looking into investigation, and have brought in some reggio Amelia philosophy, which is definitely taking children and using steam, um, art, and dealing with, um, a lot of nature, a lot of science, to be able to have them experience all of that, and to be able to have critical thinking that comes out of kind of open-ended opportunities. So we are, for culture, you know, we're, we're preschool, and that makes it equitable to all of our, um, families, which is excellent, because we only have a rich preschool experience before they start kindergarten. And we work very hard to have compassion and to expose our children to the world around them. For community, we work really closely with our community. Right now, we have thirteen classrooms in six different community sites, and we work very hard with those partnerships, both as four K, and also under our umbrella, we work quite a few three-year-olds programs, and we have a full inclusion of our three-year-old students with special needs. So we work very closely with all of those sites to do that inclusion. We also work closely with our actual families in four K. Part of four K through DPI is that we need to have ninety hours of outreach, and we always have probably a hundred and fifty hours of outreach programs for them. We have one tomorrow night. So some of that is done through the district, some of it is done through the individual sites, and this year, we're working really hard to work together on that. And to be able to use more of our community partnerships, we've worked with the library, all the Leopold, the zoo, quite a few different partnerships, that we would like to really expand and be able to have our families become more familiar with the wonderful resources that we have at the company. Challenges, probably our biggest challenges next year are actually childcare. Um, we are fine in our four K numbers. We have enough community partners for our four K classrooms, but our community is really in a need for the childcare outside of four K. So four K is a half-day program, but many of our children need to have childcare services in the remainder of that half-day. And our numbers are, our partners, our partners have decreased, and our enrollment has increased. So it's very difficult to find those childcare out of, we call it wrap care, where the hours outside of, um, four K, and for our two and three-year-olds coming up. So right now, Oregon is looking for childcare partners, and I have to give a shout-out to Barb Feeny, because she's been helping us. She had a conversation with Stephanie, gave us a referral of a possible, um, person that we'll be working with. So we really, the, we want to take care of all of our children, and if anyone has a lead or any ideas how to increase that childcare, I'd love to help out with that. Um, opportunities, we have some really exciting things in four K. The CSAT two is working with us, we are their model, for developing a program that is going to be looking at inclusion and doing some environmental rating at the beginning of the year, and then coaching along the way, and then a, a post-environmental rating scale. And we have been chosen as the model for them to do that. So it's, CSAT two is running it, but it's actually for the state program. And also, the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, which all of these people are very familiar with, has done a kindergarten through twelfth-grade program nationally, and that has not improved the four K. And this year, we will be actually a pilot, starting four K goals. We've worked with the, um, Dane County Alliance for a Healthier Gen- no, I'm sorry, the Dane County Help the Kids Alliance, to come up with four K goals, and we're going to be piloting that as well. And that will be, we will, there will be three schools in Dane County, and they will be the first ones in the nation to have that. So we're excited for that.
You're gonna be the first one in the nation to...
To have the goals for Alliance for a Healthier Generation. So we're working with them. They haven't just developed the four K program yet, so we are the pilot to give them the information to start working. It's very exciting.
We're off to K four, right?
Yes.
So we divided our slides a little differently. We gave you just a quick snapshot overview of the competency, and that, that would be our data married across the three schools. We're very caught up with our reading and math competency. We're gonna talk a little bit more about how we got there and our plans forward on the next slide. So this is just kind of like the umbrella to the competency, and then we'll break apart to each goal, and speak a little bit about what gives each site its winner.
One of the things that we've continued to focus on is growth for all of our learners. Is growth for all of our learners. This year, we have new curriculum, um, at the elementary level. Um, we have units of study and writing, Lucy Culkins' units. They've been implemented over the last few years. This year is in full implementation mode, um, and it really focuses on three different genres of writing, informational, narrative, and argumentative. It really supports high-level thinking for students. Um, it synthesizes, and students learn to analyze and critique. Um, it also really supports students' independence and provides multiple opportunities for students to write. In the past, students have written like one type of argumentative, one type of informational. Now they write multiple ones within the unit. Um, and it really ties in a lot of mentor text into the writing, so students are able to see what good writing looks like in their classrooms. We've also implemented units of study for reading. Um, there's lots of things that are great about this, um, also by Lucy Culkins. It really empowers the students to be a reader and also a thinker. It really teaches the skills through the workshop model, which is a mini lesson from the teacher. Um, there's a book that's read aloud. It's continually, um, brought up again during the, the unit. Um, it's really, um, brings reading to life for students in all grades, and it supports inquiry, collaboration. Um, it really teaches students, um, the reading skills and strategies to be a proficient reader, and it teaches students to do some self-monitoring and also keep track of their individual growth. Um, this really, um, provides mentor text again, but really helps scaffold, um, the reading for students in our classes.
And then looking at math, as you know, we went through kind of a pilot year last year where different teachers were still doing everyday math. Some were doing investigations, some were doing bridges and so on. When that group came together, it was, it was just such a fascinating process to be there that day, because there were cheers from people so excited about bridges. When I look at our data specific to my site, and I'm sure Krista and Dawn would say the same thing, um, the teachers who piloted bridges in our building last year had data that was really... had data that was really off the charts, almost literally. And you could tell when you looked at the learning quadrants of where kids scored, what teachers had that experience in the classroom. And so that was a powerful kind of artifact to support that transition to bridges. Teachers would say they love the depth of it. They love the conversation within it. But it is a big learning curve this year. And we keep telling them the benefit will be in the end because we were already sort of, our data, I think will be even higher because it's a rich curriculum. And it was really led by us, by a teacher group making the decision to move forward. So this year is going to be even better, if that's possible.
So I want to start the rest of this slide by echoing though what you've heard about these new curriculum resources and why it's involved on this slide. We know and want to recognize for our teachers that this is a major effort this year and we're looking for, getting to learn these resources and work together collaboratively to put the best teaching and learning experiences for our students in place. Not to say we're not doing anything else, we are. But I think we want to bring it home. And we see it every day, how hard the teachers are working. And excited about the resources that these are bringing to them in terms of the learning experiences that students are having. Because you can see how engaged students are in the learning. The other day, I was in a math class and just seeing the amount of students collaborating and having discussion around problems and hearing their thinking modeled out loud. Really, you can see, you can just see the difference. And it's neat to see. But we're going to continue, as we have been, studying and trying to implement more of the elements of personalized learning. That would probably look a little bit different at all of our buildings as our teams continue to connect with the district Personalized Learning Initiative task force and find ways and inroads into personalized learning for our sites. We have a real strong commitment this year to PLCs. You've heard Mary reference that. And I'll spend a little bit of extra time on that because I think it's important. It's another big effort on part of our teachers in really asking them to change their practice. And I'll share with you what we're asking of them. And that the work of a PLC, and maybe I'll even step back, that term PLC, which stands for Professional Learning Community, has kind of become like the term Kleenex and a generic for all facial tissues. Anytime teachers are together, we seem to call it a PLC. And that's really not what the original model was about. It was about teachers looking at student evidence of learning and answering some very specific questions. So that as a teaching group, teachers that either share content or share students or both are having collaborative conversations about what do we want our students to learn? So what, making clear what are the learning targets? So that we and our students are aware of that. How will we know they are learning? What assessments are we putting in place? Do we all have agreement on what mastery is for our learning targets? How will we respond when they don't learn? So as a team now, when we're looking at student evidence, how will we collectively respond to our students? No longer silos in classrooms working alone. And then finally, how will we respond when they do learn? And when they already know it and it's time for a session? We don't want to slow the pace for students who are able to move at a different pace. So again, trying to keep them in that zone where they're learning that they're just right ready in as well. So that process is certainly not, it's a little bit new. And as I said, I think PLCs have gotten a little bit off track in probably every district I've been in. And so it's not surprising. And we're trying to realign ourselves to those questions and stay true to collaborating around that model. Also, this year, our coaches are engaged in a model of coaching called Student-Centered Coaching. And they've had some training on that. And are now introducing that to our teachers as well. And it connects so well to PLCs. And then again, it is based on evidence of student learning. So in both cases, PLCs or the Student-Centered Coaching Model, everything we're talking about is centered around what we're seeing from our students, their learning. And then finally, other professional development happening just in general about the workshop model of instruction that Dawn referred to. The reading units of study and the writing units of study are there to help support that model. And what's great about that model is that it is an inroads in our minds into personalized learning. It goes away from that one teacher, the font of knowledge, dispensing it to twenty-five students all at the same time, to a model where it is more student-centered and teacher-facilitator-led. And so as we move towards personalized learning, it's really a model construction that will help us get there.
I see the five-minute warning, so we're going to go quickly. This is probably my favorite slide only because it speaks really to a change of paradigm. Looking at, we used to look at behavior data and look at it as a negative, like this many kids had office referrals and so on. We're going to switch it this year into the idea of increasing movement, increasing healthy choices. We've had cooking classes, gardening, movement. We are stocking, the picture to the right is our movement room, which is just awesome. You know, you work through some things with kids and you give them a chance to move. They're going to talk more, they're going to open up more, they're going to be more engaged in the learning process. So we're really shifting it. And it has been so ground up. I have like grant-writing beasts on my staff. I have people who are just passionate about this. And I think it improves our student achievement because they have kids that are engaged in their learning. Looking at community and culture, two things, they kind of go hand-in-hand in that looking at those engaging and relevant learning experiences and the shift there again. We don't want adults just to come in to speak to our classes. I'm trying to get teachers to think through the lens of invite adults to come participate in classes so that they can see how learning has shifted, how learning has changed, and be part of a team to solve a problem. I have grade levels working on that through an inquiry process, putting out questions, inviting people in to participate just as students. So it's more authentic to, you know, school life above high school and what it's going to be like to be out in a classroom of a variety of learners. So I'd invite all of you to come in and be part of any of those lessons. And we're kicking that off in the next two to three weeks, which would be very, very exciting. So looking at personalized learning, first, we're talking through the feedback loop and having that be our focus. And just engaging families to come in in the lens of be part of what we do. Don't just sit and watch. So that's very exciting for us.
All right, so for Netherwood, character and culture, I guess I'd really sum it up by that top sentence, emphasizing the importance of developing the whole child. And what this really is about in our minds is helping to build the foundational soft skills for our students. The PLCs and our competency goals are all about the academic foundational skills at the elementary level. But so too do we have to be so aware and build these soft skills, the communication, collaboration, problem-solving, critical and creative thinking, to scaffold our students to be successful all along the way so that when they do get up to the high school, and Jim may speak to it tonight, but the kind of plans he'll have and this group will have for student independence and learner-driven learning, we need to start it at this level and get our students capable of being independent learners as they grow through our K-12 system. Some pieces we're putting in place is continuing to further our nurture birth practices. Our school counselor, Ruth Driver, brings a great background in that and is helping our staff become more aware of and implementing those tactics. Continuing to emphasize growth mindset in our students and giving them opportunities to where they have to struggle and fail at times, but then be supported to see how they grow from that. We're also going to look into some other ideas for social-emotional learning supports as we know that we want to grow students to become more independent and take on those challenges. And this year, our guidance department is implementing the Second Step Curriculum, which is a great road into that. Just the other day, I saw Ruth doing a lesson on empathy. And when you think of most of the models of design thinking today, they all start with empathy. So it just goes again to show how everything can be interconnected and will drive our students in the right direction. And community-wise, again, we want to emphasize strong family and community partnerships that support relevant, engaging learning. Our outdoor learning spaces, both our Arboretum at Netherwood and the joint outdoor classroom between Prairie View and Netherwood continue to grow. See some pictures from projects in the last year there. Those are just excellent outdoor learning experiences for our students where there's context to learning for our students. Another thing we're trying this year is a very small pilot program where some of our teachers are using a writing continuum as a tool to engage in goal-setting and feedback with students, and then also sharing student progress through that tool with parents at conference time. Really hoping that that's a window into a new tool and a new way, especially at the elementary level of having parents be much better informed and aware of where their students are as a learner on a continuing of knowledge and skills that we are developing.
I'll go quick, focusing on whole child again. We have a monthly, or a yearly theme of Stand in My Shoes, Listening with Empathy and Understanding. And so we kick that off in the fall. We have pop groups, mixed groups, grade-level groups that will be focusing on that topic. We have a new student leadership team in place that focuses on community service, school safety, and school spirit. And have quite a few students on that this year. And we also have a PBIS school focus on being a respectful learner. And so lots of different things around PBIS implementation this year. For culture, we're working on continuing to survey students, staff, and parents to find what we can do to continue to make a supportive and safe learning environment. Continuing doing pop lessons and having students and teachers give feedback on that and how it affects the culture. For community, we are working to have a new outdoor learning space, five-fraybeds, some crushed gravel paths, and some outdoor seating areas that we will be starting in late November or, depending on the weather, in spring. We hope to involve many community leaders, but really hope to have more learning and engaging experiences outdoors and not always inside. And we continue to provide after-school opportunities that really help enhance our students and kind of make them more global citizens.
We are off to RCI. Case, Shannon, and Jim, we're looking at the clock. And I said, looking at ten, too? My map was bad. It's actually eight oh five. So Jason, do you want to walk us through RCI?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start out by saying that our leadership team at RCI has done a terrific job helping us shape the direction that we're going in right now. Looking at some of our data, we dove into it beginning part of the summer. Looking at where our reading and mathematics data is, it looks strong, but we have a definite area of improvement, especially when we look at growth. Our students are achieving, they're making gains academically when we look at, maybe at one-year growth. But we're still trying to work on potentially closing those achievement gaps. A couple of things, I won't repeat everything that elementary principals talked about with the implementation of new curriculums. But we are in the same boat as elementarys with bridges and the reading units of study for writing or full implementation of that. As well as we have, all of our fifth-grade teams are piloting different units of the reading units of study. We have several teams that are in full implementation of it as well. This past summer, we talked about each of the groups just trying to implement one. But we have several new teachers at the fifth-grade level. So they said, why learn two different ways of doing it when we're not implementing it in seventeen eighteen? So our teachers are really working hard as far as making great experiences for our kiddos. Going back to August twenty-ninth and thirtieth, our in-service days, we went through a process as far as what we want our students to leave with by the time they get ready to go over to the middle school to really help us shape our theory, the theory of action. And I know many of the schools are calling the need of the high school from that last year. We have five major themes and attributes that came, or skills and attributes that came out during that process that when we worked with our staff. We have growth mindset, passion, character, self-advocacy, problem-solving, and critical thinking. So when we looked at those five different areas, we wanted to look at some of the high-leverage teaching modalities that we're seeing across the board. And through the work of that throughout the first six weeks of school, we kind of came to a standstill this past Friday in-service back in October twenty-eighth. We identified that reading kept on coming up across the different content areas. And we felt we missed the mark a little bit when we looked at those skills and attributes. So we were able to hone in as far as where we're focusing on reading as well as critical thinking and problem-solving. Now, we still are very passionate about those four other areas because we firmly believe that all those different skills are necessary for our students to be able to access the curriculum and remove as many of the barriers to learning as we possibly can. So we're really focusing right now with our school leadership team as far as leading the whole staff through our theory of action process. From there, once, I'm hoping that we're going to be coming into completion mode pretty soon, but hopefully before the end of the first semester, we can start that next process of collaborative classroom visits. Really trying to dive into being able to observe, learn, and reflect with one another as far as our teaching practices and continue to improve. Looking at character, there's so many different things that are going on with character. I would say several moving parts, whether it's Second Step Curriculum that Chris was referring to, our school counselors are working for fifth grade, our PBIS lessons, our character trait lessons that are happening on a monthly basis that are being infused into all the different classrooms, as well as continuing development in the area of really honing in on some of that empathy and those other characteristics that we want our learners to have, as well as looking at acceptance, understanding others, and trying to walk in someone else's shoes before you make judgments. Always different pieces that we know are truly important. I just want to point out, those three bottom pictures all have some pretty significant meaning behind them. The one on the bottom left, looking at, those were, I believe, the October Character Award winners in our last assembly. Looking at the middle, that middle picture that is a group of sixth graders come together after doing an asset activity in class. And that far-right picture is a community-building activity when, I believe that's Turk on one at Camp Grade last week of October. So all those different components really go into what we're trying to emphasize when we're looking at character and building that. Really looking at the mission of our vision paper of really emphasizing the whole child. This is a huge component that our teachers are very passionate about at the fifth and sixth-grade level. It's really honing in on that. And our final slide, we have a lot of exciting things that are happening. Trying to really emphasize building community, whether it's with parents, guardians, our community members. The lower-left picture is our first Parent Connections meeting. We had twenty-two families, twenty-four parents altogether who came. We have our Parent Connections meeting. That's the first Monday of the month. We're really trying to morph it into a PTO that's working on providing opportunities for our students. This past month, we've had quite a bit less of a turnout, but the conversation was still rich as far as how we can continue supporting parents at home, as well as how we can continue to support our learners. One of the things that has really stood out to me is there's a lot of passion around the wonderful space that we have at RCI and really kind of following suit of what the middle school has done, the elementaries have done as well. We're looking at implementing a three-to-five-year plan as far as having a poop house, having raised garden beds, a compost area, an outdoor classroom, we identified a couple of different spaces to try to do something that's really unique and giving our kids the opportunity to learn in a beautiful environment. And our parent connections group, they have there's a passion behind that as well. Mid to early September, we had a group of parents and students who came by to do, to help us build our Pan Bowl Pit, which has been a really exciting activity that our kids learned. All the kids who came through and came back, they really developed a passion behind that. We actually placed it on one of the building, and we've moved it to a more central location a couple of weeks ago, and we're really going to be excited about that. And then you look at the top-right picture, that's a community partnership we have with Oregon Community Bank, as well as our friends at Oregon School District, looking at creating partnerships to make some donations to some of our local agencies that are trying to support our students. Last month, we made a donation to Oregon Youth Center. So again, we're trying to provide more opportunities for our kids as well. Some of the other pieces that I could talk about with our culture, we really have a rich and strong tradition of our RTI process to make sure that our students are not creating benchmarks, are getting to a spot where we're fine, deliberate interventions to make it, make learning more beneficial to them for bridging that gap. So my timer is just running to me because I've reached my limit. So I'm going to pass it over to Shannon.
I was setting her timer. So our first slide, like the other schools, is the competency data. And here, we're looking at first reading and then math. And even though our students are doing really well, one thing that I think most schools across the state, across the country deal with is we start to see some different motivational and engagement issues with middle school learners. And we try to balance that with some of the things that I'll talk about in a minute, with meeting social-emotional needs within our school. But some things that we're focusing on this year, and hopefully you're going to hear some redundancies across the different buildings. But like RCI, we began our summer with our leadership team, working with our staff, and in the fall, what we want eighth-grade graduates to go and be able to do, a similar process that Jim engaged his high school staff with last year, trying to hone in on those attributes of an eighth-grade graduate. And we're using that to guide our professional learning this year, to help our staff really focus on establishing learning targets, what is the success indicator, so what type of feedback do we give our learners, and collaborating with each other. There's so much expertise within the building, and how can we help to break down those silos so that educators can have professional dialogue with each other, learn from each other? And so like RCI, also looking at doing collaborative classroom visits. You already heard about our shift with our instructional coaches to really focus in and hone in on student learning. We're doing that at the middle school, too. And one thing that our leadership team has really started to talk about is how are we using instructional minutes at the middle level? We only spend forty-five minutes a day in language arts and forty-five minutes a day in math, and those minutes are much higher at P six. And so we're trying to look at how can we still provide students a lot of engaging opportunities at the middle level while increasing the minutes in those content areas? And so we're trying to figure out changes we can make to our master schedule to allow students to spend more time in these areas. I've combined character and culture together for brevity, but also because they're so intertwined with our middle school learners. We're a PBIS school, we have many opportunities to focus on reteaching and teaching and acknowledging positive behaviors and trying to help them make good choices so that that isn't a barrier to their learning. Last year, and you can even see some of yourselves in photo, probably like that, we continue to build off of our restorative justice program. We've had several circles, even just in the last couple of days, with some kids who are struggling, first quarter's over, trying to figure out what changes they can make, what they need from our community to be more successful in our school environment, and trying to look at social-emotional supports that will help them to be more accessible, connecting with outside resources to make that happen. And really trying to use, we have a time during our day called Connections, that's about twenty-four minutes a day, helping students to build connections with each other and school-wide activities that help kids feel more connected to school. Community, I wanted to spend a little bit more time about. You're also probably going to hear from Jim about academic and career plans, which is a requirement that goes into effect next year through, in the fall, through the Department of Public Education. And it asks for all schools, for students in grades six through twelve, to develop academic and career plans. And they haven't been very specific about what that needs to look like, but we've been working the last year and a half or so, looking at how do we help students think about their future and make steps in place now so that when they leave Oregon High School, they're college-ready and they have some ideas? And so the middle photo is from an event we started a year ago called the Career Gala. And we have about thirty local professionals in different fields come and present and work with our middle schoolers. And so they're to see one of the beauticians actually doing one of our students' hairs as part of the day, but we brought in doctors and chocolateeers and athlete trainer, athletic trainers, doctors, dentists, police officers. We brought in a pilot, that was exciting, and bringing in all these different people. But we just were flooded with people who wanted to meet with our students and engage them. So that was exciting. The other photo on the far-right side.
Did you bring in a live, too?
We did! Gina came, too, it was good. The photo on the far-right-hand side is from something we've also started doing as we think about academic and career plans, it's called the Reality Store. Again, we had probably thirty different community members volunteer. Students go through a financial responsibility simulation, and they have to live and pay bills and deal with broken cars and have children and daycare. And it helps them to kind of get a sense of how to, what's the reality of living and money? And so that's actually, we were a pilot site for that a year ago. So we're continually trying to find ways to bring the reality of the world into meaningful ways with our middle-level students. In addition to that, we're continuing to think about ways that we can help parents stay engaged. We find that the elementary level, parents are super-involved, super-connected. They have the one classroom teacher or a small team. They get to the middle level and they don't know how to navigate that and how to make meaning. And developmentally, we see students start to kind of pull away from their parents a little bit and test boundaries. And so how do we help make those connections is another thing that our leadership team has been talking about, of how we can help parents feel more connected while also giving students that autonomy to help them get ready for high school.
To the high school. You know, when we began the school year with our folks at the high school, we spent a lot of time with leadership this summer thinking of ways to incorporate a new board paper into really beginning with the end in mind, with what do we want for our kids when they leave us? And the five values really resonate with me and with our leadership team, and we have the opportunity to really align our improvement activities to those key aspects of the board paper. Many of the activities that we hear with an instructional focus, you know, my colleagues are incredibly talented, and we have a spring that kind of rolls through a lot of our levels. And so there's a lot of consistency. And our theme for the last two years, which has been kind of our battle cry, is it's about the kids, it's about learning, and it's about the relentless pursuit of better together. And so when we look at competency data at OHS, there are a million indicators. Ours look different because they are no longer grade-level indicators, they are college-ready indicators based on the ACT. And so there's a variety of different measures. There's four sub-tests in the ACT. The top bullet point on our slide, fifty-one percent of our juniors met the ACT reading benchmark. And those benchmarks indicate a readiness for students to achieve at, it's a fifty percent likelihood of earning a B or better for the companion courses in a credit variant college course during freshman year. And so fifty-one percent of our juniors last year, which would be the class of 2017, or this year's seniors, met the reading benchmark. When we belong together, our ninth grade through eleventh grade tests, our ACT ASPIRE tests, that really, that dropped down a bit, and it was in the range of about forty-five percent of OHS students met those readiness benchmarks. So we know that while we still are ahead of state testing levels, we definitely have a lot of room to grow. And so we see, similarly to Shannon, in that this is not a language arts-only focus, that across the building, we work really hard at incorporating close-rating strategies, deep learning, focusing on literacy across the curriculum, and giving kids a chance to read, write, and critically think, and then to get multiple opportunities, I think I heard that over here, as well as support and feedback. And feedback is, beginning with our personalized learning task force, this year's instructional focus is feedback. And so at the high school, we have been digging in every PD and every faculty meeting, we've got to focus on and collaborate. So some of the things in here that the ACT ASPIRE for the first time had predicted growth for the, for students this year, and sixty-nine percent of our students met predicted growth in reading area, and eighty-six percent in math, which far exceeds what is going on at the state level, in math in particular. So we're looking really closely to see those practices and to really try to build on those strengths. Class of 2016, last year's graduates, had graduated at a ninety-nine percent clip. Twenty-two percent of the kids met all four benchmarks on ACT. The 2017 class, thirty-seven percent. So that was a significant, significant difference and a significant increase in students who had, who had met all four benchmarks, which is, which is really solid. As moving forward, there's the, on redefining readiness.org, the National College and Career Readiness Indicators. There's a variety of different, because in the end, what do we want for our kids? Well, our kids to be ready for the next challenges. And there's millions of data points, but in the end, we want to make sure that we are preparing our kids for their next challenges. And as Shannon had mentioned, I am not going to go too deeply into academic recruiting planning tonight because I believe I only have ten minutes, and we have an appointment maybe in two weeks. So I'm hoping that my leadership team can come, present a little bit of our academic recruiting plan system to the board. So we will be backed on that, and that has been a huge part of our work over the last year. And just a couple other indicators, forty-five percent of our students took an AP course with an eighty-six percent pass rate on the AP exam. I'm really proud of that. We also, a few other readiness indicators, out of the consortium of the University of Chicago, a three-point-O by the end of your junior year was seen as kind of a key. And almost sixty percent of our kids met that, while on the flip side of that, two-point-O or less, that was about thirteen percent of our kids last year, school-wide. Competency's next step, focus on instruction. In high school, it's real easy to have silos develop over time. So we have worked hard on uniting our work together. There's our little picture of our theory of action. It hangs in every classroom and really unifies the work that we do. So we're going to continue to deepen our implementation of our theory of action. CCV is what you've heard about, that has kind of spread through the district, are ways in which we examine our practice with real Oregon Panther students, with real Oregon teachers, and we all come to it as learners. It is not an evaluative piece, it's not a part of educator effectiveness, but it's a part of us building collaborative culture and us learning together. And it has been profound, and there had been some key moments in which high school staff had come forward and said, "That was really very, very helpful and useful to me amongst the most." You know, we had a teacher who's been in our district for thirty years and had never been in anyone else's classroom, and was just thrilled to see colleagues doing what they do with students. So collaboration among teams and supporting common SLOs was a big piece of what we've done and are continuing to do. A really deep focus on feedback for learning and through ongoing PD and development of equity teams and focusing how our practices can, you know, help close our gaps as well. They're all key for our competency instructional focus. Interventions and supports, we are, our BIT team is using data all the time. There's a slide that'll come up in a minute, just as a real snapshot of that. We're using data within departments, STAR data and ACT data as well, tracking progress of students, and really focusing hard on freshman Fs because that's a key indicator for success later on in school as well as readiness moving forward. We've created a new algebra support class to really provide struggling and fragile learners with a double scoop of math and support with their teachers, which has been really helpful. We expanded Homework Club to four nights a week and Saturday Academy. And we have a student robust tutoring program that has a bunch of contact hours, not only at our building, but we've also launched, I think, three hundred and thirty-seven hours in other schools as well, with fifteen tutors, high school students that are going out and hitting other spots. I see Juanita White Ark here. She is taking a group of twenty OHS students, I believe, to twenty-two to the Whitewater for an aspiring educators conference because we really believe that we need to promote our own profession. And so we're really proud of our students giving back. We offered for the very first time a Saturday practice ACT, twelve dollars a pop, and then we've got a hundred and ninety-two signed up to take that. And it's, the beauty of it is they get to keep their test booklet, and two weeks later, we come back with their score booklets and we can write an analysis with our kids when we take an ACT and we start to study. So, you know, again, while we don't want to focus on single measure, those are important measures to our kids because it really does, it does help them achieve their goals as well. And so we're excited about that, and we're continuing to focus on our achievement gaps. And flip, this is an example of something we looked at more and more deeply. If you take a look at the upper-right data from the class of 2016, those ninety-nine percent, when those kids graduated, but students who had failed a class in the ninth grade by the end of their run were still, it was on average, a one-nine-four GPA. Students with no ninth grade failure, three-point-two-eight. So it's both a symptom of and predictive of struggles academically we can get to. So we really want to focus. And when we look at our data over three years, you know, first semester to second semester data, and you can see there's been a reduction in each of the years from first to second semester failure. So that transition to high school, you know, is, it's difficult. It's really hard, and we really have to focus. Last year in particular, we had forty-four percent fewer overall Fs during second semester to first. And we really attribute that part to our BIT team focusing in on freshmen who are struggling. We've got our chief program ramped up, and we've tried to really work with the middle school, identify kids early. But additionally, one of the big things that we're really proud of is seventy-five percent of our freshmen with first semester Fs had fewer Fs or perhaps no Fs in that second semester. As you can see, the previous year, we had thirty percent of freshmen with first semester Fs with fewer second semester Fs, which means that seventy percent of those kids either had as many or more. So we feel like we're on the right path, and we're doing the right work. Sometimes all of us can attest to you that, you know, we do the right work and we believe we're doing the right work in the day that we follow. And sometimes it doesn't happen initially. So combining character and culture following Shannon's suit, you know, we really believe that relationships and engagement are two essential elements for overall positive high school experience and are a means for keeping our kids plugged in and away from things that are counterproductive to them. We know that our kids identify relationships with staff and with other students is really, really key, and that was an addition into our theory of action this year. And when we look through the amazing number of things that our kids are involved in, you heard Mike and Gina share the extracurricular and interscholastic participation. We had seven hundred kids last year identified, and we know there are more because of our means. We've got thirty-six clubs and activities up here and that are, that are really have huge membership. FFA's over a hundred kids who are involved in a variety of ways, looking to lead and to give back, and we see that is huge. So the musical this weekend, we had over a hundred kids in our building involved in the musical, in one way or another. It was, you know, onstage, in the pit, behind the scenes, painting props, doing whatever, working the songboard. And we had fifty percent of our kids roughly involved in the scholastic athletics. And this year, we're dusting off great restorative justice practices that I still wear. We had a PD day recently with staff where we did circle training with staff and gave our staff a chance, and it is always astounding to me that that, you know, that that works. So many, I mean, it is. And it's tremendous when we have staff members who came and said, "This is the best PD I've ever had," and who got to know their colleagues and want more experience. So really positive. Community goal, you know, you're going to hear more in a couple of weeks from us on academic and career planning. We are really excited about it really integrating with all there is of our kids' experiences at OHS. And there are some tools that the state has given us that we're really excited about that a couple of weeks ago we exposed our staff to as well. And they were very, very enthused about it. And so we're excited to, we've been doing some connecting with listening groups of students and pulling key kids and doing, getting feedback from students on brief tips and experience here, and everything is coming back very positive. So we're excited and enthused. We've got work to do, and we are definitely rolling up our sleeves and we're going to try to learn each and every year for our place. I think that's it. I think that's it.
In closing, you'll notice in the document, there are data by each school in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. And there are also plans, I'll call them implementation plans, that principals and the school leadership team have put together for sixteen, seventeen. You may notice that the formatting looks a little different by school. We didn't stick to a rigid format, but we welcome your feedback and info on that. We also provided you a section with a facilities report. It's not often, the community grants us almost fifty-five million dollars to work on facility projects. So there's at least one folder for each school that gets some work done. So we can answer some of your questions tonight. I think Steve and I kicked around the idea of what normal and five-ish minutes.
Hi, this is Jim. And then recognizing that we'll come back, I think, but we were planning the first meeting in December.
Correct.
To, to do more follow-up. Let me just, I'll go over this way. I've got three pages of notes and I'm going to condense them over the next couple.
You get your red cut.
This was just always terrific. Okay, it's the best session we have all year, in my opinion. And tonight was no exception. But I want to highlight, Jim, I think this was this, for, this isn't a criticism, criticism of the past, but this is the first time I felt like the high school is on board with everybody. And that was probably the best report I've heard from a high school since I've been on board. We're systemically involved with learning K-12 or core K-12. So thank you, Mr. Jim. Okay, go over Bart.
Darren, did you say that the data's behind this is online right now?
Uh, no, the data behind this is sitting on six individuals' computers.
Oh.
Seven individuals' computers. So we can provide you, if, if there's something, if there's a piece of detail that you'd like, just let us know. We sort of have intentionally not put together the three-ring binder, because the readership has been so, so open.
I don't have questions right now, I know that more, there's, there's so much here to talk about.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm curious, what kind of opportunity might exist for the providers of the Core K program? Kind of either collaboration or sort of observations to sort of share, what their experiences are and dealing with that in particular. I know, as you mentioned, that there's obviously a certain, perhaps, and hopefully that's something we're going to address. But I was particularly interested, you've got thirteen different classes, basically, wondering what kind of opportunity might exist for a shared between those providers of, kind of, both the, both content and also some thinking and skill.
Sure, that's where that one Friday, one, okay, we have three hours together, but we do that collaboration. And it is, one entire hour of that is completely a TLC, but we're looking at data.
Do they have a chance to do an observation as well?
Well, they do, actually, just two weeks ago, we did our first CCD. And the, the directors were fantastic, because, and I also, there are also actual director meetings. But the directors were able to get subs for those teachers, so they were able to be released and visit. And that was a big milestone, because in an elementary school, you know, as a teacher, I had this advantage of having other kindergarten teachers next to me. So if I had a question, I could just go next door, or I could walk past a room and see something to spark an idea. They had that advantage. So it was great for them to be able to observe each other. And we have two more scheduled this year, so that they can visit each other's classrooms.
I'm also curious in terms of what's being done in terms of outreach to identification of families with kids that are helping with Core K programs and how they get connected early.
How will they connect with the two-four-A?
Yeah, I'm just, how you, connection with parents, whether you're in the new, the district or the child or that.
Sure, before four-K begins, so in January, we'll have orientation meetings for all of the three-year-olds that are going to be upcoming four-K. And we have two state-large sessions. There are usually over a hundred in each night, we have two nights. And we have everything on our website. We have, the daycare, childcare providers actually do a lot of it, because they have children in childhood that are coming up. So that, that takes care of probably sixty percent of our, our students. And then we are putting flyers up around the community. We have quite a few people that call the district. You know, they know immediately when they move into a community, because ninety-eight percent of Wisconsin schools have four-year-old kindergarten. But that's an expectation that they call. Is that, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I guess the other question, do you have communication with kindergarten and adult teacher? If you identify students who might have special needs or special education needs or, how that information is shared? I mean, we're too concerned, one, I think it's important for the beginning of really addressing personal learning needs, but it's also a concern that sometimes that can end up stigmatizing or attracting kids in terms of their whole perception of what they're, they're.
We look real closely, we identify children at age three or the, the school district, for any kids with special educational needs. And so we work all the way through and we're closely with the kindergarten teachers.
I guess my, pardon my, just.
I think of the elementary school, but they, we.
Concern is to try and find ways in which those kids can do as quickly as possible. Maybe students, so they don't.
They, they are completely, we, we are at full inclusion, even at age three. Where we used to have self-contained early childhood rooms, we no longer have that. So all of our children are, are included in regular childcare settings or regular, or kindergarten.
Probably using a long time here, but just a quick, like, suggestion. Redo some, wouldn't we, acronyms as much as passwords? And sometimes people are nervous about the, the, and everyone thinks, well, not to bother the rest of them. It's going to be familiar with SLOs or whatever. The other thing I was really in the report, we tried to, every time we use an acronym, we provide a definition. I'm really, really pleased, I mean, this is excellent. Really pleased that there's a focus not just on content learning, but also on some analysis, critical thinking skills, and also interfaith and, and critical. I'm curious and would like to see, I guess maybe I should go ahead and say it. Because I'm really interested in seeing how kids interact and having the feedback between particularly developing things I've created. One of the, some of the things we've got are really, really engage kids in that. Overall, this has been a great report.
Thanks, Jim.
Crystal. First of all, I think it looks fabulous. I think you're getting people to pick it up and read it. I think the content is really, really meaningful. I guess one question I have is, the plans for twenty sixteen, seventeen, all of the schools have it based on the four Cs, except for the high school and middle school, it's based on the five values. Is there a reason for that? I'm just curious.
That was there, a little bit of creativity. And we did not want to go back and adjust it, because we wanted some feedback from the board. And since this is a first-time report, we don't have a benchmark that people are going to look at last year's. But clearly, our approach has been, from the very beginning, the goals are based on the four Cs, we live our values. And Jim, in particular, identified how the high school, how resonated, this high school staff members resonated on the five values. So we said for this year, if that's how the high school and middle school will view it, we'd like to get your reaction, but also the reaction from the board as a whole, and also a reaction from the community.
Um, I, I can.
Go ahead.
But what, we spent hours this summer as a leadership team. They, you know, read the paper, discussed it, came up with ideas to advance the values. And what we came up with is all those values undergird all of the four-C goals. And so we sat there like, oh, collaborative classroom visits. Well, I mean, it is about competency, but at the same time, we're also touching on those other values. And we, we really, we spent so much time trying to, how do we peel this apart? That where we landed was all of these things undergird all of our work in the building. And so that's why we ended up the way that we did. But we spent a lot of time struggling with it. And in the end, we decided it was more important to figure out meaningful ways to advance the values that are also advancing the four-C goals.
Our, yeah, our force, the, the metrics and, and our goals are, are here, kind of in that margin on the right. So we, we, we wanted to figure out how to, how to, how to bring action steps to, to, you know, develop things that, that our four-C goals, that address our four-C goals and then the others as well. So open to feedback and happy to, to make things work for ways in which you would appreciate it.
And I've got other notes, but my other one, just other question is, having you with the goals too. I think if you're looking at this as an external audience, it's really helpful in the goals, like Shannon did at OMS, is to say where you're going from to where you're going to, so people understand what you're trying to do. If you just say, "Increase the number," that doesn't mean anything to an audience. That they really want to be able to see where you are and where you're going. So I think I would like to see that in all the goals, that you're giving the audience a sense of where you are and where you're going. But it's great.
Jeff.
All the specific questions next month, but, but for tonight, I'd like to hear some feedback on the new framework for the reports, based on the position paper, both pros and cons, if anybody that wants to speak to it.
Yes, I looked at, almost like Shannon said, we really tore apart the visions and did sort of a needs analysis, looking at where did we see our strength within those five pieces? Where do we need improvement? Where do we need to build understanding? And we spent a lot of, I would say, January through May doing that. And like she said, so many of the things were embedded within the four Cs, but you could make ties to different areas across. So I love the idea of looking just at the visioning piece, because it, to me, it becomes so alive and so realistic. And it changed our thinking as a leadership team from benchmarking and goals and charting that data to what makes your building come alive? And how is that, the, those ideas, how are they delivered through your daily practice?
So it took you away from the numbers a little bit?
It, it did, and maybe it shouldn't, because that should be where you, you make your move. But this was so much more exciting for the leadership team to be a part of and have rich discussions around student learning.
I sometimes think, like, the numbers that you have set, like, you just have that in your head and there's not, like, those steps kind of get lost. And with the thinking as a path forward, they are always coming up at our leadership teams, at our staff meetings, at our PBIS teams. And so it's really helping us breathe the, the vision in our school.
You know, and, and a consistent challenge for, for all of us are to make an integrated meaning of, of all of our program activities in such a way that they are, the work that gets done is the work that you can truly tend. And so I know that I'm really excited about the additional, you know, PD days that will enable us to continue to collaborate over the work that really needs to get done. Because, you know, no one drives my PD, there is no flavor of the day. Because really, you need to go, we need to give people a lot to get the same kind of supports when we are implementing change, that we need to provide for our students. That, you know, we need to collaborate, we need time to think, we need to take it away, bring it back, we need to test runs some ideas. And so, you know, we, no matter what format we use, we need to make sense. And kind of our theme is what's in our bucket, what's in our bucket? And we got to make sure that whatever's in our bucket, we contend and that it doesn't overflow and that, you know, we're really, really cognizant of it. So I think that the framework is, is helpful and we, we need to bring it to life and to make sure that we can manage improvement activities that we prioritize for our staff.
Leslie, Maron, I mean, how does it taste different? Does it?
Being able to watch it unfold, I would just say very simply that I saw an emotional and intellectual connection to the five values that changed the process. Not that people deny the importance of measuring the four Cs, because it's certainly very important. But this resonated with people in a way that's very different.
There's a stronger connection. And one of the other parts, one of the other reasons for the stronger connection, there's probably only one or two people in the room that, that have been in the district when the four Cs were established in two thousand and three. And they're still our time-honored framework. But virtually everyone went to a vision conference, which was in essence the establishment of five values. And from my perspective, we can identify a way for six to seven hundred people to get behind our goal process. And the other shift this time was the notion that school leadership teams are going to write their orientation letter. Their involvement is starting with a patient, a priest's ownership, and as Carrie mentioned, brought it to life. So I think that was a critical, critical policy change.
That's, that's one of the ones who was here when we first did the first one, who were based on leaves and how we struggled with that. And it was trying to find the right number to focus on, to measure success. To hear tonight, that the values gives us an emotional attachment to learning that we don't like the numbers, but it's more important and that not only do you recognize that, but it's resonating amongst our educators. That paradigm shift is really significant, recognizing our.
In ten years from now, it'll be something that people will do, switch. But it's the, it's the evolution, the involvement, the refinement of the goal-setting process and establishing, establishing our priorities and making, I think it's a very natural transition.
You know, I had, we were working through the referendum, we were answering emails back and forth about the accountability part of that. And, you know, that obviously involves a segment of the population who believes that we can measure how we're doing by a number. And, and I would wish those folks had been here tonight to hear that. And that puts numbers in context, which this does. So we need to drive that message, because that is still out there. And while we get it, because we've been living and working with it, I mean, it's, it's, there's still going to be a disconnect between this and that population who believes we can drive numbers. And so we need to continue to educate them. Tessa, anything?
Um, yes, actually, um, in a nutshell, Mr. Plunge's report, I just wanted to kind of comment that, like, in, I've just noticed in this past year that, like, as you, it, it just seems like you've established, like, a different sort of environment in the high schools. So, um, what I mean by that is you've extended, like, the after-school, like, for the homework days. And even by creating this, like, algebra, um, extra support for that, I know that there are so many students, including myself, that may not understand the subject at times. And I think the change has really, um, established, like, this open environment, you know, like, for a student that's struggling or something, like, they, they are not afraid to kind of, like, ask for help if they are. And I think that's very important.
Thanks, Tessa. Gwen.
First of all, I love the new format. And I'm, and from a design aspect, I like the fact that there, there is different approaches to the layout, with the goals on one side and the values. I think that makes for an interesting and read, where a person will want to actually finish brochure. Like, I, I just keep going back, because I'm sufficiently stimulated. But what is even more interesting is that because of the layout and the design, it makes it easier to understand the data. And the data is revealing, and I think that's really important. And concerning the data, and by no means is this a criticism, it's only something that we need to address. And the first thing that popped into my head was when I was looking at the reading scores that started to decline in the Oregon middle school and the high school, it kept, like, hormones. And, um, and that, you know, the interest isn't there. But I also wanted to, wanted to note if there was some sort of research done concerning, um, reading. reading in terms of a book or textbooks in the higher grades and its interconnection, please forgive me, John Tanner, the technology. I myself am totally addicted to my iPhone and my computer now. It's where I go to get a lot of information. And that, you know, you can't teach an old dog the truth. So, but with that being said, I did travel last week and for the first time in many months, I sat down and enjoyed a novel. And I had forgotten how pleasurable it was. And I'm wondering if there's some sort of broad-based research concerning this that might help us understand the reading aspects and how this is, and I think it's a positive thing that, and it's something very difficult. So, that was, that was my only concern visually. I love the new format. The reading scores, I thought were really interesting based on one, one thing. And I don't know, you know, can we depend on that particular assessment too? And that's the other, that's the other aspect of that. But I was concerned about sixty-six percent. And then the other thing I wanted to ask is I loved the PowerPoint. So, would it be possible to, copies of the PowerPoint? And for the reading, I, again, I don't want it to come off being negative, but maybe this is something that we can devise a task force or a committee to do, begin to do some research and make some correlations and, you know, hypotheses and stuff like that because it's kind of fun. But also, it would get us to another plane of understanding and helping those students out. Does that make sense? And I hope you didn't take it as a negative. Okay. But yeah, I just, this is great, but this adds a little bit more substance. And I think that should be available. But as an outreach, wow, cool, thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Great. And so, the plan will be the first meeting in December, Brian?
Yes.
The only meeting in December?
The only meeting in December.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah. We will, we will, we will give you, have more specific questions. And if you could kind of email me so that we can kind of group by topic and organize that, I'll put mine together too and send it to everyone. Good.
Will we be able to have, oh, okay. Will we be able to have a copy of the PowerPoint before the first?
Yeah, we'll get that out.
Oh, thank you, Janie. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, A.T., for just a really terrific, oh, yes. All right, Brian, that takes us to number F, and that's November referendum board of candidates served and called by number candidate service.
Yes, I do. Me and my two grateful citizens that helped me out, Candace and Shannon, we did have a meeting that was publicly noticed to count the election results. And as everyone is aware, the election, or the referendum did pass. The total, based on all of the different municipalities, was seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six yes votes and four thousand three hundred and twenty-six no votes. So, sixty-five percent of the voters in this district approved the referendum.
Terrific. And?
Thanks to Janie for all her work.
Yep. So, I'll give people just a brief opportunity to reflect it all on the referendum process. And what needs Jeff anything? Just thank you to the community. You don't like asking about it, but it's kind of the world of the current living. Charlie?
I just think this is a good comment. In the district, we started, and I think it bodes very well for the future of the district. My hope is that we don't have to do this very soon. And I particularly just been seeing whether there might be some discussion among the board about how we might be more effectively engaged with legislature in terms of communicating concern that, I had heard when we were coming up to the referendum, concern of the part of some people that the tendency to go to referendums, support public education really takes pressure off and reduces some of the, right around the legislature to uphold their constitutional responsibility for, by, and for public education. So, I guess that conversation.
Krista?
I just also want to thank all the people that were involved in developing the plan. I know it was a three-plus-year process and that took a lot of effort and compromise. And so, I think that's a really important thing, that a lot of stakeholders were engaged and asked their opinion and a lot of work went into that. So, I think that's really important. I hope it also shows the importance of education and how, I think we've learned in the last couple of weeks too, that giving kids a chance and getting them a good education is really one of the most important things we can do for setting a child up for success in their life. So, I think that also shows that the community really invests in education and we're pretty lucky to live in a community that supports the organization as well as the people.
Gwen?
Emotional about this because I feel proud to be a citizen of this community and to be a part of this board that is so, so, and a part of the educational community that values education as much as we do. And I also believe that it's coming together as a community and sharing the value. And once again, I'd like to also reiterate what Krista said about the process that got us to a logical and very comprehensive plan. Thank you, Gina and everybody else on that committee because it's a great vote of confidence.
Barb?
Well, first, I'm gonna call out our administrators who did fantastic jobs, Dr. Busler, Gina, and Janie, and a lot of ours. Really appreciate it. And I heard about how often people saw you out there, so that really worked. I really am thankful for our teachers for hanging in with us through this long process and not losing faith or discouraged that we would get to this place. And then, of course, thanking our community to actually offer to have more money taken out of their pocket to help our kids succeed. So, thank you.
Several things. First, our community sent us two messages. One was a money message and an agreement with us that the plan before us was needed to bring our educators up to a compensation level that they deserve. It's not always easy to ask for that money. And the fact that they responded so positively was significant. But the second one is, as has been expressed, was more of a value statement by our committee and our community. And we've, our visioning paper talks about values as it grounded in values. And the fact that our community brought into that and embraced it in terms of public education is more affirmation in terms of our long-term vision. So, I think we should feel good about that. Two, I want to echo Barb's comments about the work that was done here, or by Janie and Gina and everybody, but in particular, Brian, you, your schedule, every in-betweener was the list of things that you were at, and you went way above and beyond. And I can tell you that referendums don't pass by the size of the community does not trust their superintendent. And those of us who were in the buildings and saw Brian interact knew precisely what I did by that. Third, I think it's a credit to the board because we are honest with the electorate. You know, we had a decision to make as to whether to vote November and April. It would have been easy to say April, where we would have less turnout, where the message would have been not as hard to deliver because we didn't have as many to deliver. And we went out when we knew most people would be voting. And I heard that on a number of occasions in the communities. We appreciate you coming up. The other thing I heard was the fact that we didn't hide from the fact that this was a recurrent referendum and we were asking it forever, where other communities have couched in four or five years. And when you explained to them, we don't want to kick the can down the road to other boards and that we need this, that resonated strong. And the fact that they were honest with our community spoke to the vote. And third, fourth, there were, there were a lot of people in the community who really worked hard for this, there was a yes committee involved in it. A lot of people did a lot of work with that. Julie Isley and Tim were the chairs of that. And they did a lot of behind the scenes work. So, this wasn't just about the board or us, there was a community embrace. So, you know, with the passage of the referendum, we've had, you know, we've completed what I call is the trifecta. We've got our buildings up and are nearing completion and the fact that we're doing that at little to no taxpayer expense because of planning is significant. We now have added the teacher comp referendum. And it was really hard to separate those two. I mean, that was not an easy decision, but, you know, we make a judgment that the best way to get both of them passed was to take this course. You know, it's nice to reaffirm that judgment because it wasn't easy at the time, but we've got that in place now. And then our visioning paper is the third thing involved, and we've got that course set for the future. So, we are really in good place in this district. And I hear that in my travels and discussions with administrators and other board members that I've interacted with the last month, they are envious of what's going on in this district. So, we are in a really good place. So, that concludes my spiel on the referendum, but I was smiling a lot earlier.
I want to thank Steve for his leadership too. As chair of this board, he has been instrumental in these things occurring.
Brian, information items, and I know part of this will touch on our implementation of the referendum because we've discussed that. I've met with Brian and others for about three and a half to four hours this week after the vote to check in on that. And so, we've got a brief report under the guise of the superintendent's report, just for information. We'll continue to update you on that. So, Brian, why don't you take it from here?
Yes, I have a handful of items to share with the board. And Gina's going to provide a real quick summary report, and she has a handout for all of the board members. Gina, do we have that placed at the?
I don't.
Okay. Well, Gina's handing that out. Everyone would take one. As Steve mentioned, Steve and I did a little debriefing on, actually, Tuesday night, again on Wednesday. And then Gina, Andy, Steve and I met Friday afternoon, and we wanted to provide you with sort of our, what our operational piece is, what's next? Because I'm sure you may be getting those questions, what's next? And you'll recall, I emailed all our staff on the successful referendum, and I said, stay in touch or stay tuned. We have some next steps, but it's going to take a few days for us to get those next steps put together. And Gina and Andy did a really great job of putting together what are called process timeline as well as some process steps. And Gina, would you, Shabby's with the board?
Sure. So, in terms of what's next, the exciting implementation of our new model, so thank you all, it's been a very fun job this past week. We'd like to see where people are going to be placed. So, there's something Andy and I are hard at work on in terms of, after the board discussion that you want to share with staff as to what next steps are. And so, if you remember, we have a three-year implementation. So, Andy and I are really working backwards to look at in the third year, where would staff be placed in terms of the dollar amount and then working backwards to this year. So, you'll see that on the plan itself, our first step is to place educators on the new plan and determine their compensation. We have a, we're working on a process, and Steve and I met with Tracy later today to talk about this, and she was on board and offered for the OEA to help in terms of how we inform individual staff members about their compensation and then give them time to make any adjustments because I want to make sure that I get it right before we pay people. And so, the OEA is offered to help with that. So, we have to figure that out. We also have to look at the professional development days and place the, we have the five days for the sixteen, seventeen school year as well as the seventeen, eighteen calendar year. And then, of course, we have to make sure everything fits within our budget. So, and we want to communicate that out to staff. So, in terms of our timeline, it's ambitious, but we are optimistic that in terms of communicating the plan to staff, that we'll have that out before the Thanksgiving holiday. Obviously, we need to settle the collective bargaining agreement with the OEA before we determine where people are placed. And so, Tracy's confident that we can accomplish that before Thanksgiving break as well. And then, I give myself until December second to establish those compensation amounts for sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. And then, we'll send those out by December second and then give staff a week, so December ninth, to contact me to make any adjustments that they feel are necessary and have those conversations. And then, in terms of HR, our payroll is due to the bank December twenty-first. And so, we're hopeful that between the ninth and the twenty-first that we can work on that because we also need to do retroactive calculations back to the start of the school year. And so, hopefully, if we get to the bank December twenty-first, then we will pay everyone December twenty-third because that's our payroll deadline with the winter break.
Merry Christmas.
And with the happy holidays. And then, in January, then we'll send out updated teacher contracts. So, with our goal to be before the winter break, then everybody will have their new compensation amounts and their back pay.
We feel like we have things in a good place. I think it's critically important that Gina's communication style with our, with our teachers has always been excellent in giving teachers an opportunity to know if they have a question or concern, you know, please come know. So, if you guys get a question or concern, you're always welcome to talk to one of our staff members, but eventually, I suggest, please roll them to Gina so we can get that tied down because her staff are waiting to process the payroll. And we want to get it, we want to get it accurate, you know, the first time out. So, we're going to put together a communication memo to send to all staff so they have a sense of what states are that we're looking at and the process if they have a question about their placement. I know that that is a common practice because my wife just went through it in her district where by the time she got the first memo or the first email, within a day and a half, because she didn't have time to look at it, someone from the district office sent her an update and said, oh, there was a little mistake. We found a mistake. I think that communication process is really critical to make sure that everyone feels like they know exactly where they've been placed, why they were placed in that area. And if there's a question, they can come closer with Gina.
And at some point, probably in December, we'll provide more details with you. But right now, Gina and Andy and Brian are working through the data and the numbers and they're not finalized yet, but they're questioning them. But we just wanted to make sure that the board knew that there was a process in place and what the timeline of that process was. And the goal is to get the sixteen and seventeen compensation out before Christmas. And we did meet with Tracy today, and she's fully on board with our implementation process. So, it's been a good method of communication.
If you have questions or ideas, roll them to Steve or to me, and we will keep you on the lookout in terms of how we proceed. A couple of other items. October, I think it was twenty-fifth, I had two fantastic guest presenters because I had the Rotary program. And Dawn and Chris were my guests, and they did a great job explaining their new roles and what their background was like. They ended up getting lots of questions and a standing ovation. When they were finished, they were standing and everyone was clapping. So, that's terrific. And they had to get out of bed early because we started at six forty-five a.m. and they did a terrific job. Also, that particular week, you got a few references from the principals. October twenty-eighth, years ago, some of you might have been familiar with our two teacher conference days, our OEA conference that was at the end of the month. We still have one professional development day. And I hope you read the update that I've provided you, that principals wrote. And to put it in a nutshell, we had great professional development on that day. A number of staff members commented to their principals that this was the best they ever had. I hope the next time we do a PB, they say this was the best we ever had. So, that was a really, really productive day. Just to comment on the referendum, I have always felt fortunate to live in this community and to have children that graduated from the community. I really enjoy our parents. Our parents are terrific, are terrific people. Our community members are terrific people, just like, I'm sure you have the same experiences that I've Just like, I'm sure you had the same experiences that I had during this referendum. Standing in line at Quick Trip, or I'm standing in line at Bill's, or I'm standing in line at a restaurant and running into people talking to us about the schools. We, I want to pause for a second and just remind you, not every district has the type of community support that we have. We've really unified the community along our schools. That is a unique, unique feature. I have colleagues, I don't know every superintendent in the state, but there's four hundreds plus of them. And districts have tremendous challenges balancing their budget, raising funds by the referendum. And I never take for granted what we have in our community. And I'm sure you don't either. I thank people often because their support really makes all of this happen. We are in a very unique situation. I wish, Charles mentioned a moment ago, what can we do for other districts that don't have what we have? I think about that a lot because there's a lot of kids in communities where the wherewithal just isn't there for whatever reason to invest in public schools. And we have that. We are so fortunate. I've talked to John Bales, the executive director of the superintendent's group, and John Ashley, the executive director of the School Board Association. And I think we have to do some messaging for them. So I'm going to be tapping or requesting a few board members to join me so we can share our message with other districts because maybe they can find something that's going to help them and get them into a position similar to one they have. When you talk about when's the next referendum? This might scare you, but I had a conversation with Phil Sveum last Friday. And the city of Pittsburgh, a new administrator, Patrick Marsh, brought the two of us together for a conversation. Phil Sveum is the developer of the Northeast Neighborhood Plan. And I have a rough draft copy of the plan. And I visited with Steve at one of our bi-weekly meetings. And I suggested to Steve, I think it's really important that we invite Phil in. He'd love to talk to the board about the Northeast Neighborhood Plan. And we're queuing it up sometime in January. But doesn't mean we need to go to a referendum tomorrow. But it is, it has the potential to build out in eight to 12 years. And it's 1,600 homes. It's not the 4,000 rooms that they talked about at one point in time. But I think it's really important to get that in front of the board in January. Steve and I also had a conversation about getting the population task force together so we can get ahead of this and get community members involved in learning about what's coming down the road for us. And if you're not familiar with the Northeast Neighborhood Plan, pretend we're driving on Highway 14 to Madison. And just before you get to the Lacy Road Bridge, you turn to the right and where Highway MM is, the project basically runs in between Highway MM and the next road over which is Larson Road. It's about 300 acres in terms of total size. And the residential portion of it will be around 100 acres. So there's lots of green space, lots of conservancy space. And in that, in that particular area, it's so close to Madison, so close to the Belt Line, so close to Highway 14, so close to this, to this business called Epic. It's probably going to move quickly. So Steve and I mentioned, Steve and I talked about bringing Phil in to the January meeting. Again, the board doesn't even make a decision, but just so you have a better level of understanding. And that is a really exciting project that is right in the heart of our district. Gina is working, our next meeting, our next board meeting on November 28th is a meet and confer. And Steve and I had a conversation two weeks ago at our OEA's New Year's meeting. And they were going to get a list to Gina on meet and confer items. And we will have that set up. The one thing you'll notice when we talk about the agenda, remember whenever we do a meet and confer, we try and get started at 5:00. So we'll chat about that location because we might have to move the location. Or maybe, I think we'd still like to meet at 5:00 because that's best for teachers. But remember at 5:00 in this particular room, there are all kinds of young people with ASC. Another exciting project we brought, our third wave, working with Leslie. And Leslie's provided a lot of leadership to adaptive schools training. We filled up our class again. We have over 50-plus adults, adult learners. And we completed day one and day two of adaptive schools training. The advantage for us to serve as the hub for this, it gives us an opportunity to educate our staff. But also in building a greater education community, we had six to eight different school districts that participated. And we provided some of the lowest cost professional development training for the districts. It's around $300 a person for four days. That is an incredible price. All the day coming Badger Conference schools are appreciative. We're not doing it to make money. We're doing it to cover our costs and grow the sense of, the sense of education across the state. Lastly, JD handed this to me and I left it on my desk. But you will see in the Oregon Observer, our annual board election notice. That's required by state laws, really not something the board approves. We put it together and we asked Krista to sign it as a school board clerk. It looks a lot like every election notice we've ever put together. JD has it right here. So that's in the paper. Sometimes I've listed that separate on the agenda. Honestly, it snuck up on me. I thought we had it, I thought we could bring it to the next meeting, but we needed to get paid out in this meeting. Another item that Steve mentioned to me was a construction tour. So JD's going to send a doodle out to all of you. We'd like to do a construction tour for the board before winter break. And let me tell you, it has changed dramatically. I took a quick walk through just before lunch today at the high school and the middle school. And it is transformational in nature. The good news is there's no more mud to walk through when you're on, when you're on the site. But it is a little dusty. So we'll schedule something. And I don't know if your preference would be in that, what, 4:00-ish range? Or I'm guessing that's going to be your preference. And we can get someone from Fendorf to be with us and we'll try to schedule it. I know Andy's here somewhere. We'll try and schedule it at a time when Andy and one of the Fendorf project managers can be here. So any questions you have, we will have them covered up. The projects are in great shape. The big red crane is going away this week, which is kind of sad. I love standing over in different parts of the community and looking and seeing that crane fall into the trees and now it's, now it's gone. So that, that concludes my report unless anyone has a question or doubt.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Closing, future agenda. As Brian, before we get into the November 28th meeting, Brian had talked about a couple of task forces that we need to get up and running. One is the population growth and school configuration. We will work on a charter and probably bring that to maybe even the 28th. Let's talk about the 28th of the December meeting to do that because we need to get out ahead of that curve by a number of years to plan that. And then the school year task force with the calendar discussion tonight. Jeff, I know that's on the agenda for Wednesday. I would like for Visioning to start out, you know, looking at a charter for a broader look on school year and options with that. And I know Dan Rickley has indicated a desire to continue his efforts beyond other one or two of this. So if you could put that on your radar screen to bring to us. Just to be clear, this Wednesday will be school day.
Yeah.
On the school calendar.
Okay.
So that will be the subject.
Okay.
Yep. And then I would like to bring forward at some point in the next couple of months, I use sports task force and I'll work with Mike on getting that charter. He and I have talked over the last year. We really need to get that going so that they can study that for the next year. So those will be on the agenda. In the December meeting, just to give the board heads up, we'll visit again on Brian's evaluation as part of our formal process. And do that when I've got your stuff. I've got some additional stuff to look at that. But that's our normal process and will be our normal timing. So we'll do that. In terms of our November 28th agenda, we don't need to do the 17, 18 school calendar because we got that done, so.
Yeah, we'll have no action items. We'll have that meet and confer.
Was Jim going to bring?
Yes, he's going to bring academic group.
Learning as a new, that would be really good to hear from. That would be a good time to do that.
We'll put that under informational items. I just, I had it on post-it note and I have too many post-it notes in my office. I'm cleaning them up.
Brian and I did meet a long time on Wednesday and Friday. And we're kind of looking at our 30,000-foot five-year outlook as the board, now that we've got some really big projects. What are we, you know, where should we be focusing? The equity pieces out there, and I know Jeff's going to be talking about that on Visioning. But we need to kind of keep pushing out and keep pushing out. And it was really good to get back to our school reports tonight and hear what we're doing and monitoring feedback. Anything else? Anybody have anything else they want to bring that they love on the agenda? Okay. We'll continue to work on finalizing that and pay attention to time and place of the meet and confer. All right. Checkout. I've got one thing before we go along. During the consent calendar, I forgot to talk about donations. And we had four really dope junkies. Amy Binworth and her husband donated $250 for her project. Karate America gave $140 to our elementary schools for the kickathon families in need. The Methodist Night Circle donated $350 for the Brooklyn Elementary Needs Fund. And then Wisconsin Milk Marketing Board was a $1,000 grant for Brooklyn Elementary, so.
And I just, I bet Karate America also had a $1,200 donation with that of $140.
Got it. So we're very appreciative about those donations. I'm sorry, I just forgot when we were doing that. So thank you at least. So what?
Um, we're talking, I'm sorry. Talking to the Oregon Library about putting some friendship cards out there, so that's exciting. And then on Thursday, I went to RCI and helped out with the book, the last book fair. And that was lovely to see. And so tomorrow is the last day for that, I do believe. And if you want to support teachers at RCI, they have a little wish list. You can buy a book for them and that's kind of fun to do.
Great. Anything toss a in additional what you did to? Okay, great. Jack, Krista?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one thing because it's related to what Brian said in terms of support this community has for our schools and our kids. Just to kind of give you a sense of where we're at, Friends of Oregon School District, our budget goal for the year was $20,000. We're already at $17,500. And that's primarily from individuals. We have delivered over 4,000 snacks to the schools. We're getting ready to do another delivery of snacks to all schools. We did food packs for kids to take home over fall break. And then Pro Modern Salon, which is a hair salon in town, decided to sponsor Thanksgiving break. So we did a goal of $1,000. They've already raised $3,000. And then Barb through People's United Methodist Church is taking Christmas break. So they're gonna, they have us as their group for their mission of the month. And then they're also going to take buying food for Christmas break. So I think it's another sign about this community and the passion they feel for our kids. So I just want to give everybody.
Charles?
Yeah. Want to make some comments about the yellow family world. Really concerned over the last week of some reports. I've seen harassment of students in some schools that are followed by the election. I've seen the situation where in some areas, people felt that they didn't have the license to mean that they harassed students of color, LGBT students and so on. And I just jotted down a couple of comments on that reflecting that. We have things to celebrate. We have a successful referendum, strawberry opportunities for us. And we have several challenges. And I was particularly distressed that we, this is not a partisan political purpose. The court was kind of concerned that we live in this situation in our environment where people are given permission to attack, not physically, but to harass people who aren't like that. LGBT students. I've seen a thing on Facebook where at a junior high school, I think we can see some students that form a line for their own wall and weren't letting the Oregon students in this. I think we need to find a way of speaking out. I think we need to be clear to our students, to our parents, to the district. Like that, it's not acceptable in Oregon. It's not acceptable in the state. It's not acceptable in this country. I think some of it we cannot decide. I think we are the, the thinking about the reason which we came at it in a form, in a affirmative way to make sure that students feel that we're in a safe and supportive environment that's accepting. Power is, is recognized, where diversity and racism is a strength. And as I said, that's a fundamental capability inside.
Thank you. Charlie, you told me that. All right.
Um, yeah, I would echo those comments, Charlie. Thank you for raising them. We just need to be alert and responsive if there's a need to. The other thing I just want to say is that I'm finally getting the hang of this school board thing. So I think I'm going to run for another, that's all we have in our papers December.
One point for me is I went to, it was alluded to earlier this evening, was 100-plus students at the high school were involved in our musical Once Upon a Mattress. And that takes an incredible amount of time on behalf of Mike Dussette and Jenny Anson, our orchestra teacher and all the other adults who, and teachers who were involved in that. It was a terrific musical. One thing that was note, we approved about $19,000 for a new sound system and a new sound board. And I walked in Friday night and Katie Monk sprinted up to me and said, we've got it in place. Wait, you hear the sound? And it was terrific. So we did really good to get that purchased because it made a world of difference in terms of the sound in there. And they're very proud of it. We're now out of the analog era and into digital. Which is really good. And you know, there were, there were 600 people there Friday night. You know, and that co-curriculars, attachment to people, attachment to activities is what makes successful students. We know that. This was another example. So job well done by everybody involved in that. Jim, if you could let the faculty who were involved in that, that the board thanks them very much for their efforts.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That being said, we are at the magic time where I entertain a motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. The board is adjourned at 9:02 PM. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you at our second meeting.